Call to me in order, please.
This time, trustee Stone, would you give the invocation, please?
Most gracious heaven and earth, that we're thankful, Lord, for your many blessings. Lord, we pray now for this meeting. See with us in all decisions we need to know, and we'll give you glory for all the good things that happen. We're thankful for this school and continue to bless it and all the employees that we have here. We pray for your blessings on all of these things we pray, Christ name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Any public comments? Are there any comments? Here are none. Dr. Morrison, president of the court.
All right, we're going to switch up the president for this board meeting. I wanted to bring some students in to celebrate their accomplishments. And so we're going to start off with two of our now national champion. We have Haley Brewer and Elizabeth Ortiz.
Really quickly before they talk, I just wanted to introduce the two of them. So Haley Brewer is currently our sophomore captain, and she just got accepted to the University of North Texas Dance Team as an early signee. Yeah, so she has two awesome weeks left to complete our program. And then she's off to her next steps. Both of these young women are veterans of our competition team. I only had three that returned to the competition that were able to do it last year as freshmen, which posed a huge challenge, but the two of them, out of those three, truly, really did step up. And then Elizabeth is also one of my credit officers. She's a card at Lieutenant this year, and she's on her way to her next steps as well. So I just wanted you to know who was speaking to you before they came up. So I'll let Haley go ahead and get started.
There is no amount of words that could describe the feeling of being able to leave our state and go to another to represent our school on a national level. The amount of overwhelming support and care that the Cardette Showgirls received this year was unbelievable. Being given the opportunity to fly halfway across the United States to show other dancers around the world what we can bring to the table as a junior college is so amazing. With the Cardettes being moved to athletics, there has been an extra push and drive that carries over our team. All Cardinal athletes are highly ranked, and coming into the athletic program, we knew there were going to be high expectations. Working day in and day out, the Cardette Showgirls strive to be the best as any of the other athletes at Trinity Valley. The Showgirls ended up being able to bring home the gold and got to add a number to the national championship count. It's been such an honor to be able to contribute to helping not only the face of Cardettes, but all of Trinity Valley. There were so many people that helped contribute to these wins, not only the dancers on the floor. This would not be possible without all of you giving us the resources needed to travel and interview. Thank you so much for granting us the opportunities and the unwavering support all season. This year has been such a milestone in my educational and dance career. Trinity Valley will forever be the place I call. Amen.
Hello, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Ortiz, and she hasn't introduced me already, but I'm a member of the Cardette Showgirls, and I was blessed to be a veteran this year. A little bit about the Showgirls. Cardette Showgirls are a selected group of strong, determined, passionate dancers. We tuckle countless hours of practice each day with a never back down, never give up mindset. After a loss in the past year, this season's energy was different. We focus on improving every day at least 1%. And that is exactly what we did. We knew that we didn't want to leave Florida with the same outcome as last year. So we left everything we had on the map. With that said, I'm proud to say that we did redeem ourselves and that we are the 2024 POM National Champions. So I stand here with an immense sense of gratitude and excitement. I want to give our biggest credit thank you to the board for granting us the opportunity of a lifetime, which is traveling to Florida to compete and represent Trinity Valley. This gesture really speaks well about the community's unwavering support for the Cardettes, and it demonstrates that other people really do believe in this team, the team's talent and dedication. So on behalf of our team, I would love to thank you guys for the unconditional love. Thank you, guys.
I wanted to also apologize for our quick exit, but we're going to go back downstairs to practice for our spring show. Hopefully, we'll see you guys there. Thank you so much. I'll let him come and talk to you guys. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have members of our large coed who won the 15th National Championship for Trinity Valley last weekend. I'll let Molly introduce.
Thank you. For those who I haven't met, my name's Molly. I'm one of the assistant coaches of the cheer program. We brought two of our third-year athletes here, Brooke and Joshie. They both have two of the highest GPAs on the team. Something cool about them is that they've also both won with the small coed and the large coed team. So they've won with both. So two of our favorite people are going to hear, they're going to talk to all about some stuff.
Hello, everyone. I'm Joshua Bionis. I'm from Harlingen, Texas. So that's like about eight hours away from here. But I just wanted to thank everybody for the board for representing, or like just having TVCC across my chest was a really amazing feeling that I couldn't describe. And like performing out there and also performing here in Texas one last time. It was just such an amazing opportunity. So I think the board, y'all, were giving us that opportunity and continuing to cheer us on as well. But this year has just been honestly indescribable, just being my last year here. Just even choking in all the memories. It's just definitely been one for the books and one that I definitely won't forget, being lifelong friends, meeting amazing coaches that I know that have my back all the time, that I can go to for anything. And just truly blessed to be here and also represent Trinity Valley, not only for the small coed team, but the large coed team this year. So thank you all.
Hi. My name is Brooke. I'm originally from Colorado. I moved up to Texas just based off hearing about the cheer team. I kind of want to take a similar approach to Joshie. First of all, obviously, thank you. But I would say the most impactful part of being a part of this program and getting the opportunities that you guys have given us is not only the athletic side of it. Of course, it's really awesome to win championships. It's super fun to have rings to show off and plank around. But that isn't necessarily the important part to me. For me personally, I feel like from the day that I showed up here in 2021, August 2021, I have now changed into a completely different person. And that's not just in an athletic sense of like, of course, again, thank you so much for getting us to be able to compete and for all of our apparel and for us to practice and have great facilities. But also, I just feel like as a human being, I've grown so much because of these opportunities and because of the people around me and being blessed with the coaches and the friends and the teammates. It just has been really cool to develop kind of the soulful part of it rather than just as crafty. So thank you, guys, for all those opportunities and for providing us with the resources that we need.
Something I did want to mention, too, is we have, this year, we actually had athletes from 10 different countries and 20 different states. Big accomplishment, a lot of people from a lot of different backgrounds. But without the people who believe in us and support us, we wouldn't be able to get any of them here. So we're super thankful for all they all did.
All right, next up, we have two members from our Five Data Kappa organization. If you've never been over to the MAP journalism building, we really need a building just on its own for all their awards and recognition. We have Ruby and Kellyanne.
Good morning, everybody. Good evening. Sorry. Very late. Long day. My name is Kellyanne Walker. I'm the president of our chapter here at Trinity Valley. First and foremost, thank you so much for the opportunities for us to not only go to Lucas Cruz to put the file all the way out to Alamo, Florida, to represent this college. It's truly been an honor, and it was not in vain. So when we went to just our regional awards ceremony convention, which was just for Texas, we came home with two individual prizes and four chapter prizes, which were our individuals being a designated, or sorry, a distinguished chapter member, which is what Ruby put it, and a distinguished chapter officer, which is what I won. Then we won a five-star chapter certificate. You win these when you complete everything that you need to add. You left nothing out. Did extensive community outreaches, did community service, and completed everything with high honor. Then we had our college project award of merit, which is only awarded to the highest of college projects. For example, we, along with Dr. Morrison, volunteered at an animal rescue, which was great. Then we won an honors in action award for merit, which is another great thing. We wrote a very lengthy, very long, very strenuous research paper on animals and science and how they play. And then we won Texas top chapter. We were within the best in the state of Texas alone.
Wow.
That. So for distinguished honors in action, we did such a good paper that internationally we won top 100. To give you just a clue, there were over 8,000 people in attendance at Catalyst, and we were the top 100 with our prize. Then, in the top 25 chapters in PTK, we won distinguished chapter. So not only are we leading in sports, we are leading in academics. Thank you so much, and cheers from our office.
Hi, my name is Ruby Brand, and I want to thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to speak in front of y'all and to go to Five Data Kappa this as well. I was online when I first started at TVCC. I did one class, and then I went to A&amp;F for a year, and I did not do great. So I came back home and went to TVCC. Through that, I was completely online until this last semester where I have one speech class in person. But couldn't get out of that. But through that, this last August, I got accepted to Five Data Kappa. Through that, I'm a legacy student, not only through TVCC, but through Five Data Kappa. Both my parents were in Five Data Kappa, and my younger sister is currently at the Eastfield Chapter. My mom actually came to TVCC and graduated 2015 with her paralegal studies. And so I'm a bit of a legacy student. I won not only a Texas Regional for a distinguished chapter, but I was also recognized internationally as a distinguished chapter member. I was one of 34 recognized. So again, out of eight. Out of a lot of the students. So again, thank you so much. I might stick around another year. I graduate in May. I'm still waiting to hear back from universities, and I hope to see y'all around.
And one last thing. Dr. Morrison did get an award through our society for being one of the best new presidents in a junior college. So congratulations to him.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. It has been wonderful. Takes a second to pack up all our.
All right, we got one more group. We have the best student government association in the state of Texas, and they're getting ready for their conference this weekend. But I wanted them to share about their experiences, not only in the region, but also as they go on to the state conference this weekend.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Hi, everyone. My name is Courtney Styles. I am the director of recruiting and admissions here at TVCC, and I also volunteer my time as the student government association advisor. I wanted to introduce these students to you because I don't think they're going to do themselves justice for how important they are, not only here at TVCC, but across the state of Texas. I have Gage Carmen here. He is a freshman here at TVCC, and within his first year, he, with the support of Genesis, has pretty much single-handedly doubled our student government association membership. He is a very, very key player in some really big historical things for TVCC that I'm going to let him talk about, and he is a candidate for vice president for the entire state of Texas. And then Genesis Foreman, right now, she is our chapter president here at TVCC. She has served as regional president for our region of student government association and is currently serving as president for the entire state of Texas. Genesis is solely responsible for leading over 800,000 community college students across Texas, and they have put in some incredible time and effort into not only our community, but the state of Texas. So they're going to tell you a little bit about what they've done today.
Hi, as Courtney said, I'm Gage Carmen. I'm only a freshman here at TVCC, but I have the privilege of serving on the executive board for student government. And for that, I really want to thank the board for letting me do this. As you said, it's been a very historic year for TVCC student government. We actually have established two new chapters on our tarot and policy campuses. We still have both being at the state conference later this week. I can't express how grateful I am to be a part of the recruiting team to help get that out there. So thank you, board.
Gage, do you know what I want?
What do you really want, Dr. Morrison?
Gage and I did a skit for his campaign singing the Spice Girls.
You guys listening, Dr. Morrison, singing "One of You" by the Spice Girls. I have that in your text.
Could y'all do that right now?
You have.
What I really, really, really want.
I think y'all, hey, Gage, I think y'all sing it right now.
All right, Genesis.
Genesis, like Courtney said, first of all, thank you guys so much for letting us come and talk to you guys. I serve as president here for local and the state. It is such an amazing opportunity to be able to plan for this upcoming convention. I leave Wednesday. Everyone else gets to leave Thursday. But we will be competing for chapter of the year. Last year, we got second place, so we're hoping to bring it home this year. We've been working really hard on that. I also wanted to present or show you guys some of the other awards. We won chapter of the year at region. You have to win at region before you can compete at state. This is my plaque from last year for serving as president on the region board. Since we haven't gone to state yet, we don't have any recent ones from this year. This is our state plaque from last year that we held parliamentary in school, and we'll get a new one this year for president. And then this is Courtney's advisor of the year award. Unfortunately, you have to wait three years before you can run again. So next year, she will be coming home with another one of these. We are so, so thankful to have Courtney as our advisor. We love her so much, and she cares so much about student government and TVCC and just each and every one of us individually. Student government has presented so many opportunities for me. I'm a first-generation student. I did not have any plans on attending college at all until Courtney did come to my school and gave a little presentation. And I was like, maybe I can figure this out, and I will be walking the stage this coming up graduation, graduating with five honors. So I'm so thankful for Trinity Valley, and I'm so, so excited that I get to wear TVCC across my chest and be the representative at the state conventions for TVCC. I'm kind of rambling, so I'm going to stop. Thank you, guys, very much, and hopefully, we will have a new chapter of the year award to present to you next time. Thank you.
I just wanted to take a moment to recognize our students because this is what we do. This group of students that you saw tonight is what represents us, and they do a fantastic job they could not do without the board's commitment and support for their activities and organizations. So they also wanted to show their appreciation. So another round of applause for that, too. Now we have a special award from trustee Grant.
Many of you know that tonight, after 22 years, David Monk is stepping down from the board trustees. And on behalf of the board trustees, I just want to say, what a great job. You've been a great steward for the people of your district. You've been a big proponent of Trinity Valley and its causes. You've been instrumental in so many things on the board since I've been here and even before. Your leadership will continue to be felt. We're entirely grateful and thank you for your service to this institution. I never knew anybody could look through a budget and come up with so many questions. But I tell you, it's been worth it, and we're all grateful that you did that. Tonight, we're going to present you with a plaque honoring you for the 22 years. And also, I'd also like to tell you that some friends and some board trustee members and others in our community have donated to the permanent endowment fund in your honor. So thank you so much. We salute you.
All right, ready?
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
I'm going to take a minute just to say a couple of things about maybe. I don't want to pass up that opportunity. You know, I've been on the board 20 years, and back in the day when Ron Vow was president, where you sat around this table was the terminal hell of a view of things here. But when I first got here, this was my seat. And that was David's seat, and that was Mr. Day's seat, and that was Jerry Stone's seat. And when Ron left, that tradition of moving around the table kind of went away, but that was an old tradition. But I've had the opportunity to sit by David for 20 years. I didn't know David when I got here. Never met him. And for those of you that know David, David sometimes can roll the feather too long. But he has, the thing you learn very quickly about David is nobody cared about TVCC like David Monk. And I've come to appreciate that very much, David. And I'm going to have to read the financial stuff a lot harder because I never had to worry about it because David worried about it. And we all know David a lot. I'm sure we're going to have a very good person represent that district coming forward. David, thank you. It's a great friend for this board, to me, and we appreciate it.
I'm grateful for all 26 of those years. There does come a time when fresh ideas, new people are helpful for our organization. For me, I just needed to look another direction, but I wish everyone well. Whoever succeeds me, I'm sure will probably excel at everything, and you'll wonder why I stayed so long, but that's okay. So thank you again to my friends, colleagues, and you have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along, we now move to consider the minutes of the March 25th meeting. These minutes were sent to you. It's on the screen now. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as written? Mr. Easton made the motion. Seconded, all in favor? Moving on. Consider business, financial, investment reports for February. Mr. Hopkins.
Hey, board. I'll have these in the package. I'll just mention a few things from February to February and March. And no surprise, tuition is still down. $506,000 that plus, if that number also includes the spring. But we don't have a handle on what we're going to get back in the spring just yet. But you see, that variance in the one for the bookstore is mainly due to the FAST program that we talked about. But I will point out, if you look at the bottom under March, we did receive the fall allocation. The money actually showed up. So that's a good thing, $506,000. The other thing is really no surprise, state appropriations. We have one more payment in June, which will represent 25%, but that's, as I mentioned several times, the funding model is what changed that variance because we used to give it monthly and a little bit higher in property taxes as we expect. Really nothing else under MNO to speak of. I mentioned to, currently, Mount Kaufman had forgotten to bill us for our tax allocations from the county as far as them collecting it, and I felt the duty to remind them of that because at some point, that was going to come due soon. That's why you see that difference there in the population of taxes. And you'll notice that the final line is much healthier at this point of the year. 21 million versus 15, but again, that's mostly due to the change in the funding model and the property taxes. That will smooth out over the course of the summer. And we can stretch down to the investment report. As I promised, for a couple of months down, you'll notice that the cap preserve in particular is up to 34 million. And obviously, that's, to my knowledge, the highest it's ever been. We picked up 3.5 million from last year. We added a little money to that and got another CD. And so that's a pretty healthy balance. The rest of it is in money market accounts, as is the operation account to give us better cash flow. And the next page, just because the detail of that. We did pretty little activity this month. We made more money going in and going out. Again, very, very healthy balance. Last page, just give more of a minute to this, the over 25,000. And we want to present to you, but overall, we're still going to wait and see how this FAST program comes out. In the end, there are some things that we're getting paid for that we didn't. But obviously, we, those things we can't charge anything for. But hopefully, by the end of the year, Dr. Morrison and I will have a chance to sit down, see how it's working out. Are there any questions, I can ask?
David, I have a question. You share with us why you suggested the FAST program was affecting the bookstore. There's a million-dollar difference there. You're saying we've had a million-dollar difference strictly out of FAST this year in the bookstore?
You said million dollars.
Almost. The difference between actuals and.
Million 158 this year versus being 161 of the last.
Go back up. Bookstore, budget, 2031, year-to-date actuals, oh, never mind. I apologize for that. I was looking at incorrect. I apologize. I apologize. I'll accept that responsibility. I'm sorry.
That's all I.
Any questions? Any other questions? I hear a motion to approve the financials. Trustee Stone made it, seconded by trustee Monk. All in favor? Thank you. Next order of business, consider and discuss behavioral science delivery certificate 2024-2025, Behavioral Science Delivery OSA 2024-25, and general studies certificate 2025-2026.
Yes, we're going to look into getting board approval to implement a certificate that really focuses on autism. And the certificate will allow the students to set for a certification, third-party certification, the regional registered behavioral technician. They'll say is more kind of a training for those that serve and work with autistic students to kind of get extra education. We've been talking with some of our areas ISDs. There's a lot of interest in this certificate. So those kind of go together. And the next one is a general education certificate. This will be definitely beneficial to a lot of our dual-credit students who don't necessarily complete a degree, but do substantial hours. And unfortunately, out of bad choice, decided to go ahead and go to the four-year before they come finish with us. We much prefer them come to us first, but sometimes with 30-plus hours, they do go into the four-year. This will allow us to capture the students in the performance funding and also capture other student populations that may transfer out before completing their degree.
And I might point out, this says that there's no additional expenses.
These are all embedded with the faculty staff we already have. Erica, anything you wanted to add or anything?
We hear a motion to approve this item. But Ryan Singer made it, and trustee Day seconded it. All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Okay, consider and discuss policy update forty-six.
I'm gonna turn that over to Dr. Doc there.
Um, so this is just one of our semi-annual um updates from TAVI. Um, I wouldn't say that there's anything really substantive in these policy updates. We do have some that are gonna be coming out uh soon. Another update coming out, I'm thinking another month and then the title line, uh, regulations just got updated also. So those will be coming down back here and probably pretty quickly since those will both go back here in October. So when those come out, those are probably ones that I would recommend that they probably take more in-depth look at. Um, I mean that, these are all embedded by all the BPs. They sent it out to their respective uh personnel to make sure that they're compliant and that they're um in line with what we, we do out in the business. Any questions?
So with this in, that, that policy update forty-six.
I'm sure that's what that.
Yeah.
Like reading.
Yeah.
It was pretty loud.
Do I hear a motion to approve the policy updates? Trustee Henry uh seconded, uh trustee Day made the motion. All in favor?
All right.
All right, consider and discuss dining services contract.
Dr. Parton?
Ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Morrison. Um, it's been a decade since we've talked about dining services contract. And as I was just sitting here thinking, you've probably done it. And that's gotta set another record somewhere because our dining services contract, it couldn't affect for ten years. The one before that was inspected for ten years. And I believe the one before that was inspected for ten years. So uh, we are coming to you again because that contract is about to expire. Um, and we are, we have been over the last many months looking at the quality of our dining programs and looking at the options we have moving forward. Um, we have done everything from focus groups, faculty staff, students, everyone you can think of. We've done surveys and assessments. We've even given QR codes to students and they decide that they have their meal and they can write on the spot, use a QR code, rate the meal and rate the dining. Um, we've gone as far as visiting other campuses to see what they offer. Um, and in the end, with all of that, we, with the help of the, of David Hopkins, we was released an RFP we requested. Uh, all of the people that we knew that were offering dining service programs out there, all of them that we've been in contact that they give us an RFP and tell us what they could do for us. We had three responses uh to that. Out of the three, uh, we selected two finalists and those two finalists were Great Western and our current provider, Airmark. Um, interestingly, we visited both Great Western and Airmark locations outside of this campus. Um, and the response was almost the same. I mean, every student we go, you know, just like students do about how to eat food. Um, and so there really wasn't a difference in quality of the food according to our students and according to the students we knew. Um, we, we are making a direction of date change, however. I'm not gonna read all this here. Obviously, you wanna read this. In the final analysis, we, we want to recommend that you allow us to contract with Airmark. Um, and you can see the reasons on page two. It's really been a consistent, high-quality move over a period of time. Over thirty years. Um, the flexible operation, they're good with our students, they take care of our students. Student is an alley. They take care of that student and make sure that I will be taking care of them. Another, another reason that we went with these folks, and you can see this on, on page three, is that Airmark was willing to make a much higher monetary uh donation investment in one company. A four hundred and fifty thousand dollars over a term of year versus a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for Great Western. And this wasn't a big difference, but there was a small, um, small difference in what Great Western would have cost our students over what Airmark would cost us and Great Western would have cost them. So with those reasons, uh, we are recommending that you approve Dr. Morrison to sign a contract with Airmark. That's our recommendation. Any questions, buddy?
Dr. Parton, and, and yes, I think several, we can probably go back to that last contract. But for some that weren't on board then, we had the question and you probably do too, why ten years? That's a long time. Uh, obviously, that is gonna go well past some of our expiration dates. But that, that being said, the real incentive uh comes down to focusing on that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I think ten years ago, had Airmark not brought to the table a similar sum, may not have been quite that much, but it, it was in the several hundred thousand dollar range. So that, for me, I, I don't like long-term deals that someone else is gonna have to figure out how to live with, but we do know they've done a very good job and, and they, they did do what they committed to do. That one was a big redo and a gas period and a lot of other things like that. So, you know, with that, I can get comfortable, you know, with ten years, but that's, that's the only way. So that, that is some background. I do have this question. It's only one. Who controls the flow of that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Last time we knew, kind of the plan, what the calendar and the mechanics of it. How will this operate?
Before we started working on this project, we put the RFP and went out trying to find other dining offices. Um, we've been working with Airmark for the last four years that I've been here. Each year, we put that forty-five thousand dollars. Or whatever, if you're right, it was only the last seven blocks in here. Each year, we put that, that to use. We've done um new, new tables, new dining tables in there. We've done our whole there's been a whole new redesign in what they offer. Um, there've been new ovens. There, we're, now we're trying to find a pizza oven for them. But there's always something on, that the students want and we work with Airmark and we make those decisions. Um, this year, um, if, if you improve Airmark moving forward, we've been planning to do was actually upgrade some of the electrical in the dining, in the nest and actually be able to add some additional things for students. So it's a, it's a, it's a work in progress every year, but it's really an effort between both us and.
My main concern is that you have some control and influence on that, that Airmark can't wait till year number nine and say, well, we're running a little shot at fifty right now. That, that's my main.
A good example of that, you know, that when I first got here, we had a different restaurant in the birch. Um, that restaurant was not popular. That rep, it wasn't doing much business. And we met with Airmark and we said, can you find us something different? Well, they brought us another chicken restaurant, which is what we had before. It was a little better. It's getting, it's getting more traction. It's getting more people walking in. But now we're asking them, okay, not everybody wants fried chicken or a bridge side. Can we have salads? Can we have other things in that restaurant? So the student doesn't have to go all the way over to the, you know, nest. And can we figure out a way that they can use their cards and get us, and use, use one of their swipes on the cards in the restaurant as well as over in, in the birch, in the nest. Constant conversation between us and the regional manager and even people about it.
But it is an annual deal. I mean, it's, it's, that's in the contract. They just can't skip a year and then say, we'll catch you next.
Correct. And, and, and we have not written the contract, obviously, because you haven't approved us to be able to write that contract. But when we do, that, that among many other things will be addressed. And go back to, go back to the, the part where we, you know, focus groups of students. We're addressing all of their concerns as well. Um, and if, when we move forward, it, it, we choose to.
Anybody have any other questions? Do I hear a motion to approve Airmark for a ten-year contract for the dining services?
Motion.
Seconded by Dr. Easton. All in favor?
All right.
Any close? Eyes have it? Thank you, Dr. Parton. Um, consider and discuss personnel updates.
Uh, board, before you, you have the most recent updates, presentation, remuneration, retirements, new hires and reclassification adjustments from elections. I seek your approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve the trustee Henry, seconded by Dr. Rising. All in favor?
All right.
This time, we need to convene the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code section five five one dot oh seven four, the Texas Open Meeting Act for the following purposes to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duty, despot or dismissal of a public officer employee. Yo, stepping out, we'll, we'll hear a motion to convene in special session. Dr. Easton seconded by.